I'll call the meeting to order. And what's the pleasure of the board?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion on the agenda that we pass over item 11. Because of our Doug not being here. This is the having to do with the town hall roof. And I would also like to add an agenda item for the request of our town manager. And the item is traffic control, including a request for road closures for eclipse Monday, April 8. And I'll put that in as number 10.5.
10.5, okay. So we have a motion.
A motion to accept the agenda as supported.
Motion to accept, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. And, okay. So, first.
I make the motion that we approve the minutes for the select board meetings March 11th and March 18.
Second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Okay, next up, town manager's report, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I submitted my report in advance, but I do have just a couple of items to highlight. Thank you for putting the extra agenda item on about traffic control during the eclipse. And for the public, the eclipse will happen on Monday, April 8, which is the date of the next select board meeting. The official guidance from Vermont Emergency Management is to consider only using the roads if absolutely necessary. So I would endorse that recommendation as the town's emergency management director and encourage as many people as possible to participate in next month, in the April 8 select board meeting by Zoom if possible, by staying home. I intend to walk to work that day and I intend to either attend the select board meeting from my home or from the town office. There will be somebody here though, in case somebody wants to appear in person. The number that we were given, and we'll talk about it later, is, you know, up to 160,000 visitors.
In Vermont.
In Vermont, that day, sorry. Here's a question.
Okay, Susan.
Hey, hey, have you seen an announcement going to be made that somehow some of the rest of the town knows?
Absolutely.
They won't be here.
No, they will still be here. I'm just encouraging people to choose a remote attendance option, whether by phone or by Zoom for that meeting.
Okay.
You're going to make an announcement, gentlemen?
We are going to make an announcement, yes.
Susan, you have the illustrious opportunity of being the first person to make a comment with our new microphones. And so I'm going to just suggest that for anybody else who needs to speak in the meeting, Bill will set up a microphone at the front. And the real reason for this is so that people on Zoom get to hear your question. And so from now on, if somebody would like to speak, when you're recognized, if you can come up to the mic, it'd be very helpful. Thanks.
If you really can, I will do my best to repeat the question back, but, you know. So.
So other than that, Madam Chair, I'm happy to answer the board's questions or public questions.
Any questions from the board?
I don't want to. I was approached by a resident on New Road and said there was some work done on it. Was that the contractor or the town? That was the town doing the work. Did we ask the contractor? It wasn't contractor's responsibility. Why is that? So the contractor, his responsibility was to leave the road in passable winter condition as an unpaved road when he finished work in the fall. And the town agreed that the town would maintain the road as we would maintain other unpaved roads during winter. And then when he would come back in the spring, he'd put it, put the pavement down. What, you don't want to come back? I do not have a firm date, no. I can check with him, I'm not sure what the schedule is for the asphalt plans. Okay, I'll check.
Okay, board?
Nothing. Do we still have a pair of wild drivers that come in? Like, just one with your tag?
So this past weekend, we did, Jeremy called in both our retired foreman and a former select board chair and his son. So there were three additional drivers keeping the snow off the roads.
I can imagine with a year for that long hours.
No, I don't, actually, I just noted that the fire chief came in, I'm not sure whether he was called into service. He was not, but he's been on this talk. This is a short list.
Any questions for the town manager from the public? Okay, none heard. We'll move on to the rep directors' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did not put a pretty right rep director in the report because I wanted to keep it rather brief to highlight three things. One, we just had our third Brandon Idol concert this past weekend. Our fourth is scheduled for the 17th of April. I encourage everyone to come down and pop. It's fantastic entertainment, $5 here at the town hall. Well, let everybody know that we are looking to increase. I talked about last week's, last report extensively that we had 16 hours of pickleball programmed for the On Valley North campus and a request is put in for another four hours. I'm trying to be rest to 20 hours of pickleball. 25.
She had, no, another six hours, she asked.
Oh, right, yes, and we had to deny one of those out of pocket because of the baseball clinics that go on. And I want to let you know that we're extending baseball registration till next Monday to give people an opportunity to, when it snows, people stop thinking about baseball, stop snowing, stop thinking about baseball. That is my report. Do you have any questions that anyone has a rep director?
Any questions from the board, comments?
No, thank you.
None being heard? Any questions or comments from the public for the rep director? Vicki? Okay. None being heard? We'll move on to public comment and participation. Vicki, would you mind coming to the mic?
Well, I would prefer it was over there so my back isn't to everyone. That's okay.
Actually, the reason we set this up is because the conversation is supposed to be for the board and we try to avoid having conversations specifically amongst the public at this meeting.
Well, I'm not going to speak to much people behind you, so I'll stay here and think.
Then I do want to let you know that the people on Zoom probably won't be able to hear you clearly.
But frankly, we're having a hard time seriously. We're sitting forward in our seats, it's very hard, even now that you have taken the action to speak up, it's still really hard to hear you. If Vicki's back is to us, I'm not sure that we'll be able to hear her.
That's okay, I just wanted to make an informed decision. That's, I don't have a ton of control of them right now, but, but I just wanted you to know.
Is it lock wires up and hold it over there? Do you worry about people on there?
And I would encourage if it's, you know, keeping in mind, yeah, I think we're good. You got the, you got the mic? Thank you, Bill.
Even after the recent revision of the town budget, town taxes are to raise over 10%. As a person who attended the recent town budget meeting after the initial protocol failed, these are my takeaways. I was highly discouraged right out of the gate by the new chairperson's opening remark about simply getting the budget to pass at the start of the meeting. But the biggest disappointment of the night came when the town manager stood up and pointed out that 80% of town residents participate in the Hines Harris rebate program, although we didn't. As if this should even enter to the equation when figuring our town budget. It was a tactic all too similar to a car salesman asking one what they have for a trade-in prior to reviewing the sales price of the vehicle. It was highly inappropriate and offensive. Honestly, while myself am about half the time questioning me for a deputy town manager, perhaps the better question is why Bill Moore is now the town manager and save us a 75,000 percent salary. Over 115,000 dollar portion of paving is being put off until next year, not actually cut from the budget. 100,000 of paving is now being paid from the 1% fund, not actually cut from the budget. To quote former select board member Tracy Wyman, these are smoke-in here moves to make people believe we have done their jobs scaling back the expenses. The only actual cuts were the one proposed elected police cruiser and mail and ballots that are convenes to area programs, a total savings of about 25,000. What was a surprise to learn even for an individual who regularly attends select board meetings is that the town is trading two cruisers for one. And for those who don't know, the remaining police cruiser in the budget will be a recurring expense for the next three years. Also moved to me is that in a year where social security and disability recipients received only a 3.2% cost of living increase, town employees were given a 4% raise across the board in addition to the whopping $3.50 per hour raise Mr. Moore received for a newly created deputy town manager position. While this is being pitched as an enormous savings for the town in Seth's salary, the truth is that Seth's salary is in line with what Dave Atherton was his first year. This is an expected savings for a new employee versus an experienced one. Dave's salary was 92,000 his last and eighth year as brand and town manager while he was running one of the largest infrastructure projects this town has ever seen. While this is a 17,000 dollar savings for the town, the 7,000 increase to deputy manager salary brings that savings down to 10,000. So while the town hasn't actually lost money on that this year, it has lost out on savings and experience. Eight years from now, we will be in the same boat we were in last year, plus the 7,000 for the deputy town manager salary, plus pay increases. Employee management is much more than crunching numbers. Experience and longevity are factors. Either Seth or Will are the person to make this decision. It does however demonstrate the need to have competent, capable people on this select board. Your decision to reflect positively or negatively on the entire retired town management team and budget. It is easy to be generous for someone else's money. However, given the mere 3% cost of living raise for area seniors this year, in addition to the number of times this growing population is mentioned in our newly revised town plan, it is incumbent upon board to reduce the increase to the town budget to 3%. You need to do better. You need to stop manipulating taxpayers with the smoke-in here tactics or perhaps forfeit some select board in the past revision onto Seth's town.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Sure, Neil. Thank you.
Please just speak on that side. I would like to make a announcement that on May 3rd, which is Vermont Arbor Day, we will be having an Arbor Day celebration at the senior center at 2:00 in the afternoon. We're hesitant to say presentation, so I'll be making the presentation, proper planning methods. And there will be, for the first 49 or 50 people up to the, whatever table there's going to be, there will be a free red oak ceiling for them to take home and plant wherever they choose.
Not the public right?
Not what?
Well, they'll need your permission for that.
No, I don't, I'm going to cut it down.
Great, thanks.
Sure. I was going to say your last name and then I can't.
Bill Placens.
Thank you.
Is this an appropriate time or will there be an appropriate time later to talk about the budget workshop or is this my only opportunity?
Number 12.
Number 12, we will be getting to the budget later.
So I'll have opportunity to share that.
It may be better to have it all in one sort of lump.
Heather, can I just point a clarification on that? When we get to item 12, will there be an opportunity for public comment before the select board votes to adopt the budget rapid on March 18?
Yes, the practice is in Vermont for there to be public comment that's sort of at large right now and then within each agenda item to have a, you know, another public.
Public comment comes before the vote, right?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect, thank you, Dr. Ash.
Okay, any other public comment? And anything from the board? Okay, we will go to number 6. And I think Bill can introduce this topic for the Grand Fondo request to use for road ways on June 29th? Oh, is that, I forgot, okay.
So Madam Chair, the Grand Fondo is bicycle event that has happened for a number of years. They come over Brandon Gap and then they turn north onto North Street and proceed out of Brandon and they're asking for authorization to sign the road and have some traffic control assistance that they will provide so that this race can be done safely.
I make the motion to approve the request for, from Vermont Grand Fondo.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Seems like a discussion.
Sure.
Ms. Race.
Hold on a second, Susan.
Well, sir. Well, as you have known.
Yes.
Give your name and the lawsuit.
Okay, I'm Ms. Susan Bailey.
Louder.
Don't talk quietly because we need to hear you too.
The other end of the.
I missed it. I haven't been here long, it's only been 25 years.
Oh dear, novice.
Okay. Oh, my question is, is, this is the first I've heard of the race and so that's fine, I don't do everything, but it's coming over, where is it going?
It's going to go through Forestale and 53. It's coming from Bristol and down over the Gap from Rochester into Brandon.
I'm 73, Susan.
Oh, thank you.
73 to 53.
I didn't hear the 73.
I think Mr. Hopkins said 73 onto North Street and then it's, sounds like it goes, well, out of town from there, I don't know.
Out of town north.
Right, yes.
Okay, thank you.
What?
Okay, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Moving on to item number 7, winter operations policy update.
I make a motion that we accept the winter operations policy update. Second.
Any discussion? None being heard, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Moving on to item number 8, the Forestale shared use path scoping study update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you're aware, or people may not be aware, the select board approved a supplying for and received a grant to scope, form a study regarding the connector between Forestale and Brandon. Select board authorized $10,000 of 1% money to match the $40,000 for the grant. A committee was formed. The committee is in the process of selecting a vendor to do the scoping study. It looks like we put out an RFP, received exactly one bid from the boy in King. I wanted to introduce this to you to think about. At the next select board meeting, we'll officially bring the recommendation with the select board to approve, likely approve the one vendor that entered the RFP to help facilitate the scoping study. This is for, to scope connecting Brandon to Forestale by way of some sort of multi-use path.
Still with the off route 73.
So all alternatives are being looked at, you know, if you look at the, if you look at the alternatives, you know, we don't, we're ideally asking them, the contractor, to include off Route 73 simply because the idea of putting a sidewalk along Route 73 is nearly impossible. This is the first, this is not the first time this town has looked at this as an opportunity to connect Forestale and Brandon with a walking path and they've run up against this every time. This is the furthest, I think, down the path that we've gotten where we've got an engineering firm to provide some alternatives for us to look at to do that. So this is going to be a months-long process that will end, timeline hasn't ended sometime in the middle of next year, but there'll be community engagement that's a part of this. Lots of opportunities for the public to comment and, so yeah, just wanted to make sure again that you knew that this was coming down the pipe. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill, because I'll tell you right now.
Karen?
Yeah.
Have a question.
No, I can speak pretty loud, I'm pretty sure they can hear me.
It's more for the, I'm sorry. We all, it's a little, it's our first trial run.
I want to do it.
Thank you for your patience.
Thanks, Bill, because 73 is a really dangerous road. The little 73, you know, people, people have died on the track down that road. And now the paving is bullshit and the paving all the way down 73, all the log trucks, the semis and everything, you said it was a shortcut. If I have kids going to school at Neshbia, I would not let them run miles up here by the 73. We'd easily light it. It's one truck a day that we go on foot.
Thank you.
And this is the work of a committee that's involved, Jim Leary, Liz Gregore, our highway chief, our highway foreman or highway division chief is a member, are members on that committee. But again, this will be a town-wide involvement as far as opportunity to weigh on.
Karen, could you?
I have a question. Bill, this is just a process question. Whenever I hear that we only have one bid, my mind instantly goes to, they bounce by nose. Is there, are there any other thing, I'm sure we have complied with legal requirements to post, I'm not doubting it for a minute, but is there any way that we could, you know, a couple of us being volunteers, make some calls, tap our agencies, just reach out and see if there are anybody else that would like to submit a bid with a very tight timeframe?
So through this process, this is something that we started back in the fall. The RFP went out for plenty of time, we solicited specific agencies that we'd already worked with, as well as our municipal project manager is the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. They get outreach that way as well as posted to state sites where people look for this kind of work. We did a fairly exhaustive, we get, you know, we gave us the opportunity to solicit specific people, the people that we've worked with before, we sent it to all of them, plus it went out to all of their contacts as well. So this was fairly exhaustive for all the engineers that may want to pick up this word locally.
But still, we have to negotiate two against each other, right?
Sorry, with the microphone, I'm pointing for the.
Yeah, I'm not. It's still, I'm not gonna judge, but it's still, we lose the opportunity to play two bids off of each other to negotiate when we don't have a second. I'm just asking if there's anything else we might have, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the board?
Item 9.
On item 9? Oh, I'm sorry, anything else, I guess, on the pathway? So I think we're, okay.
It's just for information, it'll be active for your next select board meeting.
Thank you, Bill. So we'll move forward to item 9, which is to appoint a Brandon representative to the Rutland Region Transportation Council.
Madam Chair, so the board announced the vacancy as Tracy Wyman had determined that he was going to finish his service there on the Rutland Regional Transportation Advisory Council and interested parties were directed to submit their cover letter to me. And I have a letter of interest from Daniel Snow, who is on our town highway crew. He's interested in being the Rutland Tac delegate. And I have a letter of interest from Jeremy Disorda, who is our highway division chief, who is interested in being the alternate to the Rutland Tac. And I would recommend that the board consider both of those.
Yeah, I make the motion that we accept those generous offers to serve on this board. Second.
So the motion was made that we approve Dan Snow as the delegate for the Rutland Region Transportation Council with Jeremy Disorda as an alternate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. And we will move forward to item number 10.
Madam Chair, the select board handbook that we were provided at the first meeting of the new select board here included the appointment policy. So the select board had created a policy a few years ago that the select board would not appoint select board members to boards or committees that the select board appointed. And we have occasionally in the past had instances where there was a select board member who was serving in a capacity on another board. What comes to mind most recently is Cecil Rennishman was on the select board while she was also on the planning commission. As a result of the most recent election, we have a similar situation where Mr. Eathier has been serving as an alternate on development with the new board and has now been elected to the select board. So if that situation is to continue to allow the DRB to function so that they always have their forum and so forth, it would be good to acknowledge that the policy be waived in this case.
Okay. And I, for my two cents, I would say that it would be lovely if we had another person, but also Ralph has been willing, so any other discussion from the board? None being heard? If we're ready to vote? Oh, we need to, sorry, motion. Pleasure of the board.
Yeah, I make a motion that we waive the policy of allowing the street here to continue on the, the DRB.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let's see. The ayes have it? Okay. We'll move forward on the agenda to item 10.5, which is the thing that we just added tonight about the eclipse.
Madam Chair, because this was a late edition, I would like to read the whole thing so that everybody has the same information. Following the Vermont Emergency Management Team call that Tim Giles and I attended virtually on Thursday, so I'm the emergency management director and Tim's the emergency management coordinator. The town management team met in person with the heads of the highway and police departments on Friday afternoon to determine what Brandon can do to prepare for the forecast heavy volumes of out-of-state traffic headed south through Brandon on Monday afternoon and evening. So the folks at VEM emphasized that if the weather forecast is fair, there will be a number of people coming to Vermont over a few days, like Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday into Monday. And if they all come over those three or four days, it's very likely that the lion's share of them are going to all go home at the same time on Monday evening. So that's their main concern, they don't have huge concerns about the leading up to, they have concerns about the going home from. As we know, this will be during mud season. So the working group, which was me and Bill and Jeremy and Chief Chajin, proposed that the select board authorize the following measures, which are designed to prevent the backup of traffic in the downtown and to prevent stuck vehicles on muddy roads. Item A, we propose to set the down. Item A, we propose to set the downtown traffic lights to caution and to station officers there to prioritize the safe and efficient flushing of southbound traffic. We know that even on a reasonably usual afternoon, it kind of stacks up in the southbound direction when the lights are functioning as they normally would be set. That's the main thing for the downtown, is just to keep Route 7 moving south. The other three are to try to prevent people getting stuck because their GPS has directed them on a road that we would, you know, have local knowledge not to take, but they might not. So we propose that you authorize us to set a Jersey barrier at each end of the no winter maintenance section of Carver Street. So the north one would be just south of the railroad crossing, and the south one would be at the bridge over the Otter Creek at the Pittsburgh Town Line to entirely close that portion of that road to all traffic. This is our most likely muddy town road. We've, secondly, asked that you allow us to post a road closed barrier at the Sudbury Town Line and at Short Swamp Road to close that portion of Long Swamp Road, but to leave High Pond Road open. So this is based on, a lot of New York traffic gets directed into Brandon using those roads. This is often where we have trouble with oversized vehicles in the covered bridge. And Jeremy does indicate that Long Swamp Road will occasionally be muddy, but High Pond Road generally does not get muddy at great extent. So there'd still be some avenue open in that direction. And lastly, it may be advisable, and I would ask the board to consider giving some latitude to the highway staff to determine this. It may be advisable to close Stonemilne Dam Road to Florentine. We think that there will be a number of people who come down Route 7 and take Lover's Lane and come down Wheeler Road and then think they're going to take another quick, you know, kind of short to avoid Brandon and that low spot just after. Also does get underwater from time to time. So I would say in summation that the eclipse is one of those events in which preparedness may turn out to have been imperative, or after the fact, it may appear to have been unnecessary. But at minimum, it's a good drill or exercise opportunity. And if the traffic volume does match the Fair Skies forecast, it may be absolutely prudent in terms of keeping people safe.
I have, so I'm trying to picture that section of Long Swamp. So you're talking, you go out.
So if you went through the covered bridge, you get to Short Swamp Road, it would be the portion of Long Swamp from there out to Sudbury.
That's that long straightaway?
Yes.
Okay. But you're going to leave Short Swamp open to the crossroad?
Only because he says Marshall Phillips and so forth, and into High Pond doesn't generally get money.
Oh, okay.
So I go ahead and I'll make the motion that the select board authorize the four items identified on his agenda item. And Shami, you have a copy of the agenda item? Yes, that's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? None being heard? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have, oh, and I say aye. The ayes have it?
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to pass over number 11. And moving on to the revised budget proposal that was workshopped here on March 18.
Okay, so I'm going to start by making a motion. And once we have a second, we're going to discuss. And so the motion I would like to make is to adopt the revised budget that we arrived at at our workshop. Yes. That's my motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
So I'd like to start this off by saying, you, Mr. Sorta, you misrepresent our budget process to suggest that we only decrease the budget by car. Taking $115,000 out of the budget by deferring a road is actually removing money from the budget because it's up to next year's budget to determine whether that goes in or not. And so that's real money that came out of our budget. In addition, when we decided to use local option tax, that's money that's coming out of the money we're having to raise. And that represents a significant savings for the town. The suggestion that we can provide the same services for much less money is insulting. We have been doing this work for many years, many of us. I've been on the board for five years. We've had a budget committee that has been active and has asked questions and been part of the process. We have staff that works diligently and that is not getting fat off of any money that we're giving them. This idea that we're generous with other people's money, again, is insulting. I'm a member of this town. I try to save our town money where I can. And we're not casual with our responsibility to set it passes. In fact, if we did reduce our budget to the 2% or 3% increase, there would be people in this town who would not like that because it would remove services that we're currently paying for. And our job is actually to find a balance. And that balance point is in fact not going to be as low as you want because you want less. But it's going to be what enough other people want. So we're going to have a balance point that is what the whole process is about. And so I believe this budget is very responsible, and I hope the town supports it.
I would like to raise one other point, which was that there was a reference made by Mr. Sorta about electric police vehicles. And there's been no decision made about what type of vehicle. So there's often discussion about electric police vehicles. And that's all that there is so far is discussion. We won't make any decision on what type of vehicle the police do or don't get until later this summer. So it may be, but it also really still may not be. That just, as much as it is a discussion, it is just a discussion. It's not a foregone conclusion.
That's the last meeting, I believe Seth said it was a four-digit step her.
It was.
Yeah, four-digit step her.
It has been decided.
Yeah, what's it?
It has not been decided.
Oh.
Those are quotes that were received for the purpose of having an actual number that was realistic to build with the budget, to build the budget.
Okay. Yeah, I know you specifically said four digits.
I did. And that's what the quote we received.
Okay. So later on, and it sounds like the timing, we can expect the summer-ish. I don't know. Bottom line is, the police chief will have to get select board approval for that. And I can just tell you, we haven't been asked for any approval. So it just hasn't been decided yet. So it's a police vehicle, not necessarily an electric one. I just know that it may not make a big deal cost-wise into the budget, but it, I'm not saying it will or won't, but, but it does make an issue because lots of people have strong feelings about that. Any other discussion from the board? Yes, Karen?
I think this is very deceiving. If you saw a headline that said it was a 6% cut, there really wasn't. And people want to know what their tax bill is going to go up. And 13.4 to 10.8 is not a 6% cut. We're just deferring maintenance. It's a 2.6% cut. That's it. It's not good. I will not support it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
With respect, every one of those numbers was incorrect. And I have the numbers to provide you. The proposed budget that failed, the spending increase was 13.45%. The revised budget that came out of the workshop, the proposed spending is a 6.23%. That represents a cut of 53% of the increase. That's a cut of more than half of the increase. More than half of the increase was cut.
People want to know what their tax bill is going to go up. That's where I'm ready. I'm ready to tell you that.
In the proposed budget that failed, the tax increase was 19.52% as published in the town report on page nine. In the revised budget, the tax increase is 10.7%. Again, this is a 45% drop from the proposed number. Points and percents are different things. It was correct to say that from 13% increase to 6% increase, there's a seven-point drop in the proposal. It's not 7%, it's a seven-point. Points are absolute, percents are relative.
People want to know in their tax bill what it's going to go up. 10 or 0.7%. That's where, this is where it's deceiving.
How is that deceiving?
The number I have before was 13.4 down to 10.8.
You're not comparing the numbers.
Go ahead.
This is, this is not a public comment. I got one, but this is just a clarification so that I understand this 0.7 increase. A 10.7% increase in the town budget line on our tax bill. So that is, we also have an additional increase coming from schools, correct? So when I open my pocketbook, I'm going to pay 10.7% more for the town budget portion and then somewhat more additional from the, just, I'm just trying to make sure I understand, you know, all the componentry and we don't, we don't minimize it by taking it one little bit at a time. I genuinely am in here, I'm struggling.
Sure, Mr. Hopkins?
So the key thing is that the tax rates, the tax increases are not stacked on each other. So if the town is 10% and the school is 10%, that does not equate to a 20% increase in the tax. They're weighted. The town, the town's 10% is going to raise that 33% or so of your taxes that is the town budget. Remember, we had the, in the slides at the town meeting, chart, blah, I graph. So the school amount, which is 60-ish percent of what we pay, is going to go up some number that the school board is going to determine through their proposal. The town's portion is that one-third wedge, and that's the number that we are proposing in this revision would go up 10% versus what you had.
10.7.
10.7 versus what you had in previous.
Yes, Ms. Rhodes, would you mind using, I'm just reading through the comments I can see on the screen, and the folks who are on Zoom keep saying, we really can't hear the audience. So I'm sorry to be.
Please tell them, or get that the state is also raising property taxes a significant amount on top of what the town and school are raising.
Can you explain that? That it doesn't levy a property tax?
The town and the school are the ones that create the property tax bill. And so the state.
Watch that mat there.
That one, that's correct. Well, the state is, the state is saying they're raising the property taxes. And the state is saying that the taxes are going to go up towards state as well. And that was, that's the number we said this time.
The state can change the income tax.
Oh, they're going to whale us.
But they don't set the property tax.
No, they don't set the property tax because they're going to increase taxes on top of what the town and school are already going to tax us. So we're going to take a triple hit. Please remember that.
I think what she's trying to say.
Ms. Smith, I have to call by person, I'm sorry, just to maintain order. I know the microphone makes it tricky, but I'm doing my best.
I know you are, and I love you, Karen.
Thank you.
I think what she was trying to say is, is what's going to happen is the assessments. Because many towns across Vermont are not assessing housing for private people accordingly. And so they're only assessed, I'm making a mistake, 20,000, but they're selling for 200. So the state, Vermont Digger, go look for it, has said the towns must get better at assessing the housing of private students. And that's what's going to go up. And so everyone's going to give it.
Madam Chair, so when the assessments go up, this is historically true, this is not a projection. When the assessments go up, the tax rate goes down to generate the same amount of revenue for the town and the school. You can watch it on a graph, almost like clockwork, every time there is a reappraisal, a townwide reappraisal, the tax rate will drop. And then over time, the tax rate will inch back up over a number of years as the brand list erodes and as inflation kind of perks along its small numbers. And then it reassesses again, and the tax rate drops. So when we get reassessed, that's an equity measure, it's not a revenue increasing measure. It's revenue neutral. A reassessment is revenue neutral, it's to make sure that we're all paying the right share that's fair in our community.
And throughout Vermont.
And throughout Vermont.
Yeah, that's, that's the real reason for the reassessment. Is if you don't reassess, different communities get out of whack on each other. And the reassessment is meant to keep us all on the same, on the same plane.
Any, yes, Mr. Claysins? Thank you. And thank you for being tolerant of my.
Yeah, watch that, Bill.
So I just appreciate Mr. Giles' comment about the local option tax and that you've already, you are planning to receive that 1% additional money. So that's going to go into your flexible use to meet the needs of the community, not just for the paving, but other capital items that you're planning in the future. So you're banking on that 1%. And what we did, or what your proposed motion is, is basically carving that out with the $300,000 proposed tax increase. So I think that's real money. So thank you. However, I do echo that I think there's still options available for this board for lowering it further. So I have $49,000 more for your consideration. And I'll be the first to admit, I don't know what you need for the local option tax. But I would propose, since you've never had appropriation brought for capital improvements for paving, more than $150,000 per your presentation at town meeting, that you basically add, you subtract off another $35,000 for paving out of your tax increase. So you in essence have $135,000 out of the local option tax. So I'm proposing the same amount, 185,000, but only 50,000 raised in our tax bill. The other 135,000 come under the 1% local option tax. So I'm talking about 35,000 more out of 1% for this year's budget. So that's 35,000 out of 49,000. Then I'm going to go into the highway department. I don't know what page it is, but it has new equipment and tools. I would suggest that that could be reduced by $2,500 to 7,500. Also in that same section, guardrails, I would suggest lowering that by 5,000. That's, I believe, level funded. Roads, reduce road salt by 5,000 to the 2023 budget amount. And then moving to buildings and grounds, I would suggest reducing that by 1,500 and then tree maintenance lining. So if you add all of those together, that would reduce the tax burden by 49,000. I don't know how realistic that is, how bad the tree, tree needs to be done. Those are just some observations where I went into the budget that I felt might offer some additional savings. And I realized that 35,000 is the biggest part of that, and I know you have obligations for future use of the 1%. So that could be a point of contention amongst yourselves of how you use that in the future. So those are just some thoughts. I think if you did that, and I'm not going to delve into, I think Seth has done a great job presenting the increase on the expenses and on the tax burden. But I think on the expense side, I'm just going to say on the expense side, period, to incorporate that 49,000 reduction, I think you're under a 5% increase in expenses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. So I would like to throw this over to our town manager in a moment. I have. I appreciate you recognizing because you clearly can see both sides of this. And you did accurately identify what I'm concerned with, with taking more from the local option tax. Because in the past, it's been really important that that local option tax was available to us, and it's done appropriate things for us. And so I'm hesitant to overuse that because we still need the flexibility to have some local option tax money that we can use for matches and things like this. And so I would like to have Mr. Hopkins speak on the... I appreciate the specificity. I mean, this is the kind of comments that come up during our budget committee meetings, where people will go line by line, think, you know, do we need this, do we need this? And at some point, we start to take a certain amount on the recommendation of our road form. And so I'd be curious to know if our town manager thinks that there's room to remove these items from the budget.
Thank you. So maybe going in the reverse order that they were presented. I feel like the tree budget, there's two different tree lines. There's trees that are kind of dangerous that we need to get worked on because they're in the right of way. And the tree maintenance line is largely, I believe, to replant trees that we've taken down. Right. So we had actually discussed that tree line as part of like the overall tree program for the urban cannabis grant and so on and so forth. It was part of the big discussion, right, the tree maintenance line? So we had had 3,000 in it, and it's proposed to take 1,500 out of it. It was for planting replacements. So I'll leave that to whether you think it would be wise enough.
And going on to road salt?
Yeah, going on to road salt. Road salt is one of those very tricky things. I felt like we introduced the winter operations policy late this year. It drew a snowstorm. And then we laid it over a meeting, it drew another snowstorm. The salt use, they talked about, you know, I met Jeremy and Dan, and they used 60 tons of salt this weekend.
I think the other perspective on road salt is that once we have it, we can use it. And if we have extra, we have just more for the following. It's not like something that's going to go back.
Except we're limited in what we can hang on to because of the size of our salt shift.
Right.
So I would say salt is highly variable from winter to winter. If you have a winter with less weather, you're going to have less use of salt. If you have a winter with heavy ice, you're going to use more salt than you would in the summer. Again, this is based on historical experience of our crew and our form.
Thank you. Mr. Claisens, I see, but did you want to finish up?
Well, I think Seth was working on this list.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes.
So the guardrails, that one in particular, I would point to, there's going to be some additional guardrail work that was not part of the usual mix. And that's related to the structures grant that the town is applying for and is likely to be at the right spot in the line to be awarded for the McConnell Road dump culvert. So there's guardrails associated with that project. We did go out to bid, if you remember, several meetings ago, and we awarded bid for some guardrail work that will happen in this open fiscal year. It's more than has historically been done, partly because a lot of the guardrail work that had been proposed was not prioritized in previous years. For equipment and tools, they had bought a welder. Like they're trying to do more of their own repairs and rather than send stuff out. So that was one of the reasons why that line went up in the current year that we're in right now. And that's why they thought it was prudent to keep it there. They built themselves what they call a grizzly, like a sieve kind of thing that they're going to push the road sand through and try and prevent it from flooding up their spinners and that kind of thing. They're trying to be very resilient, and it's those kinds of things that are supported by that line. And the last thing about the paving, I think Mr. Claisens explained it in a way that it's not doing more or less paving, it's just changing where it would be funded from. As far as my own personal or professional input on the 1 percent fund, we would be getting to, at 135,000 in the local options tax, we'd be getting beyond half of what the local options tax collects in a year on average. And I would just, it gives me a little bit of pause because that's, we have nothing in the budget anywhere else for any capital grant matches, like our 20 percent for the structures grant, blah, 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 all these grants. We have been relying really heavily on local option tax to provide that. So I just would like to, if you do decide to go that route, I would just like you to recognize that it's probably going to limit your flexibility in applying for and being awarded these grants that will require a local match that's other than in Kind Tell.
Mr. Claisens?
Can I follow up? Mr. Hopkins, thank you for those responses. The local option tax option that I was suggesting is really trying to have the town commit to not spending more than what you've been asking in the future or in the past as far as the appropriations, while at the same time committing to the paving projects that you've committed to for this fiscal year coming up. So if you cannot, you know, use the option tax, I would humbly ask you to reconsider having an overall budget of $150,000 instead of 185,000 for the upcoming paving season. So that's one item. The other item I'd like to just point out, and I'm probably going to open up a can of worms for you all on the select board as far as what I'm allowed to say, so I apologize. But you have a healthy fund balance of almost $800,000. And what I just proposed to you is really niggling and dire. You've got a lot of wiggle room. So I totally agree with what Seth said, or excuse me, Mr. Hopkins, said as far as the local option tax. I think you've got other levers to look at as far as reducing the tax burden to the extent of, you know, around $50,000 or more, depending on the courage you have of, you know, cutting it close to the margins, I think is what Mr. Hopkins is saying. But you've got a really healthy fund balance as a backup. Thank you.
Well, I would amplify that, Mr. Claisens. Thank you for that. Because we do have a healthy fund balance, and we're actually in a very good position financially as a town. We're not heavily in debt compared to other towns. Our town is in good shape. We used the fund balance last year to reduce taxes in a way that I believe was the right way to go because it allowed us all to pay less taxes. I'm hesitant to go back again until it gets, again, to where it starts to bump up against the top of our range that we try to keep that fund balance in. I guess it comes down to the board to decide how much we want to try to make that change.
Someone else does, okay. Thanks. Yes, Karen. Would somebody bring a microphone over?
So I'll tell you why. It is intimidating to come and speak in front of people and to all of you. Somebody could have been on the side first, so you know that. And to put our backs to our ears feels disrespectful somehow. So if in the future we could do the same thing so that people can see and hear us, but maybe put it on the edge, I think that would be very much more comfortable.
That's a good idea.
Just a small thing. Tim, you said just now the town is in very good shape. But I would ask, who is the town if not those of us who live in the town? And those of us who live in the town have been expressing through very many channels in the last month or so that we don't feel comfort, that we're scared. We are scared because we have one wallet, and out of that wallet, the town is going to take money, town government, and the school is going to take money, and the state's always there looking for money. And it adds up to numbers when we see double digits. And when we see the double digits moving by one or two, numbers on the scale, whether that be points or percents. We're worried. We're worried that our neighbors are not going to be able to live in their homes. We're worried that we won't be able to even get people to the services that we're trying to provide. It's caring, right, for ourselves and for the other people in the community. Now, you guys have achieved something great. I can stand here and tell you all the things I don't think you've achieved, but that's not what I'm saying. You've achieved something great. In the last few weeks, you guys have articulated this budget, one that frankly, most people don't like right now. And that's because the new one hasn't been voted on. So I'm talking about the one already proposed. The majority of people weren't for it, that's why it failed. But you've got us talking. You've got people here, they're asking questions. They're driving Seth crazy, emailing him for details so that they can read them and understand them. That's what I would hope that you guys sitting up here are thrilled about. When I see that it is on the agenda tonight to vote in the budget that was recast on March 18th, when there has been such a surge of participation, research, interest, and actually, people not so much witching about the budget, but coming up and proposing, I think I know where you can shame a few. I think that's such a great thing that to see you guys proposing to vote in what was cast on March 18th seems to be just to disregard all of the goodness that you've done by getting people looking at this and trying to help. There is absolute who knows disputing that we all own it, that we didn't turn up sooner. There were budget committees we didn't go to. There were reports we didn't read. We own it, but you got us now. So please, don't throw this back, this goodness that's happening here. We're trying to help. And we're not trying to help you because it's just you guys. It's because you're part of us, right? And the town isn't... And in and of it, it's the people. People in this town didn't get a 4 percent or 5 percent increase in their jobs this year. But evidently, we're going to give that increase to town employees. That's one that sticks in some people's craw. And it's maybe something that could be looked at. There are different ways that we could spend some of the monies that we've got in reserve and coming in through various different channels. And I would just beg you guys, please, you're smart people, and now you've got a whole bunch of people that are actually trying to help. Please don't throw away that opportunity.
Thank you. Yes, Andy?
I know. I've been pretty low, boys, and at first I want to say, this is a horrible place for me. I want to go back downstairs to 16 degrees here. That's what we're saying up there. I'm freezing.
With the opposite temperature.
I know your call to it. But I guess it's a question, you know, for the town manager. I was looking at page 14, under maintenance and highway and so forth, and I couldn't help but notice there are three places that stood out to me were maintenance supplies, maintenance tires, outside maintenance. All three of those had vehicles at the end of them. And I guess I don't really understand, supplies are vehicles, tires are vehicles, outside maintenance are vehicles.
Madam Chair?
Yes. I'm sorry, Mr.?
Good. Sure. So all three of those lines are for the main trucks and the excavators and stuff that the highway department uses to get the work done. So supplies would be stuff that would go on to, you know, chains for tires, things like that, that have to be added on. Tires are tires, and some of these are extraordinarily expensive because of their size. And outside maintenance is when they send out the equipment to, like if they send the excavator up to Caterpillar to get work done, or if they send one of the trucks to Mac to get work done.
You mean it's getting fixed?
Yeah.
We're not renting it.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, no.
Okay. And when you're talking about the supply...
They do some of their own work, like they're able to do some of the oil changes and fluid changes and so forth, but some of the equipment, and that would be in supplies for maintenance?
And supplies for maintenance actually adds up to $20,000? And I can understand the tires. Now, when I look at outside maintenance, I also look at roadside mower, and I look at things that the mowing is done in a couple of different places under their own title, and it all adds up. And I don't get, how many times do you mow it?
So they try to mow... No. So they try to mow along road sides three or four times in the growing season?
Three or four times in the growing season? So we're talking possibly June to November, maybe October? Three or four times? That's all? And it came to that?
And so that's using our own equipment and our own staff to do it? Like, you're looking at lines of roadside mower maint, and it's $1,500? That's basically for buying replacement knives and blades and stuff for the mower head that goes on the side of the... That's not the actual cost. The actual cost would be many times that if you count the labor.
Okay, so that doesn't count the labor?
Right, the labor is all captured in the highway wages line.
Okay. I think that's good. Under... So under equipment rental, we're talking about smaller things? It's only $8,000?
Oh, rental. That and the line above it, I know that's where we rent the tractor truck. You know, that's this new thing that we have to do to clean up the sand filters that were part of segment six. Super expensive. I won't guess a number because it'll be wrong. I'm talking about, but yeah, so contractors and equipment rental. Contractors would be, we rent something that someone else operates for us. And equipment rental is we rent equipment. Like we rent, we will sometimes rent a pavement contractor and they'll use it ourselves.
Okay. Well, that's where contractors fall in. I have another question, and then the question is, is the cost for paving, is the cost for reusing this building in this budget?
No, I don't have that.
Right. And so do we have a cost for it?
So we had done a request for proposals, and I think we got five proposals. I think we had two or three for slates and one for standing seam, or two for standing seam and one for asphalt, something like that. So those came in, the select board has considered them, and the select board set aside ARPA award money. So that would be not raised by property tax, but taken from the ARPA.
So we have that in ARPA now?
Yes. I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's the vote that we were, when we were talking about since Doug Bailey is looking here. Yeah, just because it's, that ARPA stuff is murky. And it's not coming up all the time, so it's not something we have to worry about making habit of because if we get ARPA again, I would love to have that problem. That would be a great problem to have another million dollars just then. But since it's unlikely, we'll wait till we have all five of us.
Yeah, I'm supporting that. But I'm sorry, the progress later. It's not going to be fine. The other issue related to that is that I went to the history of the town hall. You know, it celebrated over 150 years. And it's the same roof. Because it's a slave roof. My concern is whether or not we can go with that. My concern is whether or not we can go with that slave for another year and just keep patching those holes or tarp or whatever we have to do to be able to afford some of the other stuff that has to be done. And also, look at savings because we do have to the end of the year with the ARPA funds, right?
Another current guidance we do.
We do.
But the advice from the LCT is that the current guidance could be changed without warning. The VLCT's advice to the towns was to obligate the ARPA as soon as possible.
Obligate it? That doesn't necessarily mean spend it.
Correct. Yeah. So we don't have to spend it by the end of this year. We only have to obligate it, and we have two more years to actually make the project happen.
So under that obligation, do we have any areas to look at in town that we really need to deal with that ARPA's money would cover?
Yeah. And we had a long board discussion on that. And we decided to put it to the town roof. And barring the, it's possible if you can convince three board members to reconsider that, we could claw back that ARPA money and do that. But I think you'd find that the board's pretty comfortable in their decision to go with the town hall roof.
Also, if you're interested, I can't pull it up right now because I'm not hooked up. But if you want, I have Mr. Hopkins and I made a really nice visual of what happened with all the ARPA money. That's pretty helpful, I thought. And also, I have just a boring list if you don't want a pretty thing.
Boring is always good. To add to that, as long as we're holding this until the next meeting, when the chair returns, a larger discussion, is there a chance that I or the public could see the other projects that you discussed regarding what led you to say, well, we're going to do the roof? Because I just sort of want to be more informed because knowing about roofs and slave and standing seams and all that, and the fact that this has been standing here for 150 years plus, and I keep looking at the ceiling for little spots that tell me, oh, don't do that. Have a foot finger down.
No, you have a turn, Sandy.
Right above my head.
Yes. It's like I look at you.
Okay, so that's one. You've got to have more. No, I was just curious of the other projects.
There's lots of minutes about our ARPA discussions that actually occurred over about a year and a half or possibly two years. It's been a while. And so you could look at those if you wanted to see what else we could do.
Well, I recall meetings. I don't recall a specific line of, we have all these projects, which one will we choose? I didn't go to all the meetings either, but I recall that.
We designated ARPA funds as we, somewhat as we went along because the previous town manager had some projects that he brought to us and said, can you use some of this? And we did that. And then other times, we had a long list of things. We started to work our way through and keeping a certain amount of ARPA aside. And the last step was the decision to put it into the roof. And so it was a multi-stage process of designating all the 1.1 million.
I'm uncomfortable with that, but I'm going to accept it. I remember some of those meetings now. I remember some of those meetings. I'm still uncomfortable with it. Once again, you know, a lot of people talk about, why would you put in a new floor before you put in a new roof? There's some common sense to that, isn't there?
I would say my lovingly joke answer is that Dennis Martin is also retiring, and he was champion of the bucket brigade week. So if he's gone, we really got to get on the roof, you know?
Or you got to get another bucket.
And another Dennis Martin. I don't know.
No, thank you.
You can do it.
Can zoom, people?
It sounds like there's a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I can't see who it is, but hi. Yes, Tricia?
Hi, it's Tricia Ross. I would just like to counter what Mr. Goss said early on in the process regarding the budget committee. Because the town budget committee, the townspeople that were on that committee actually had no vote whatsoever in the budget. The Select Board are the only ones that could vote on that. And a lot of the comments that you've been hearing and receiving were a lot of the comments that we did breathe forth on the committee, all those meetings we had. And I would say other than the police dog, pretty much none of them were accepted by the Select Board. And you all made your own decisions about what you were going to decide to cut or add or the final budget. And so I just want the townspeople to know that a lot of these concerns were brought to the Select Board, were talked about, were discussed at length. But the budget that was voted was what the Select Board voted. So I don't think that all these comments are just suddenly coming out of nowhere. They were comments that we had brought to you all during this whole process that the Budget Committee went through. And I think that if you want the budget to be successful and we don't have another vote we have to go through, that you really do need to listen. People are hurting. This economy is not good. And we have a lot of people in town who don't have money, don't have a lot of money. And I think we just need to be sensitive to that. And thank you for letting me speak.
This isn't a variety show.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Placens?
So I just want to be clear, Mr. Goss. I'm not suggesting that you put a line item to take out of the general fund. What I'm saying is that you should reduce at least $49,000 from your budget because I look back at the guardrail line item. You have budgeted in 2023, $6,000 spent through. Budgeted $10,000 in '24. I have no idea what you spent. And we're going up to $15,000. But the thing is, you've got latitude in your budget items as you go through the year that you can manage to what you spent. And if you have a crisis or an emergency where you've got to put in your guardrails, you've got the fund balance to go back. So what I'm suggesting is that you go with at least $49,000. Don't use the local option tax, but you've got other mechanisms within your power that you will do every week as far as what you spend and how you plan, that I think you can carve out $49,000 and still have that safeguard and the fund balance. And I think you could even do more as being suggested by the people here and by the personal. I'm trying to weigh the balance of, you've got definite cost increases and you don't want to reduce services. So what's the happy landing? And I'm just trying to get there. So thank you for letting me explain.
Thank you. Yes. I was just thinking about what I'm going to attach.
Yeah.
So... Oh, thank you. Deciding whether I needed to, or Tim was next and I'm like, uh-oh.
You're doing great.
What I was thinking about was whether it may make sense. I think that Mr. Placens' point of the Select Board never having asked for more than $150,000 in paving in the budget. I was thinking about that and how we may want to make a decision accordingly. And it just is worth discussing amongst the board because I think that that's a very fair point. The guardrails specifically, I'm going to... Yeah, we just... Mr. Hopkins is saying that we just ordered a bunch.
We run a purchase order to the Select Board at some point this winter, right? Which was to get into a guardrail replacement program, which was envisioning using money from the open years budget and money from the upcoming budget. And it was a significant amount of work. The thought behind doing it that way is that we were having difficulty getting bids on some very small jobs for installing guardrails. And there are very few providers of that service who will service our area. So we folded a number of projects in Intuit together to make it worthwhile for bids to come in.
So that's what I was thinking was that when we... I was trying to recall that we had a few years where that had come up, where it was difficult. So a bunch of projects had been saved up for that reason. And then there's erosion from some, like, I was able to guess the one that has erosion on the road where I grew up. So I think regarding the guardrails, that was the conversation that we had maybe two or three minutes ago. One of those before, or did you remember yet? So...
So can I speak for a moment? See, you're very well thought out suggestions about the roof paving. And so the way we arrived at the new roof paving amount was by removing one of the three projects. And that's why we got down to that number. And as tempting as it is to say, well, 150 is what we've done in the past, let's have that again. I guess I would love clarification that the reason is one being five of our 150 is because that's what fits the two projects that we have.
So the two projects that we have left are actually just slightly greater than 200,000, right? This is last year's number, but they're 203. Union Street was specked out at $166,000. That's Union Street resurfacing from the Otter Creek Bridge south to its end. And North Street was specked at $37,000 from Route 73 to the post office in Forest. So those together are 203.
Yeah. I think my point is that to just choose a number and say that's the paving amount and not match it to projects we have, I think is not what I would consider a balanced plan. And the other thing I guess I would like to bring up, you know, when our budget failed, it failed approximately 55% to 45%. In other words, there were people that definitely didn't like the budget, and that's why we went down. If there were 20 people in this room, nine people would actually have liked the way the budget went. And 11 people wouldn't. And that's why suggesting, because the majority of you here want to have a smaller budget, it's our job to try to come up with a balance for the whole town, the whole community. And thus, as I stated a while ago, coming up with something that will satisfy the people in this room is different than coming up with something that's going to meet the interests of the whole town.
Yes, Ms. Harrow.
Mr. Goss, I believe that the whole town voted. And that was the 11 to 9. You did not put together a budget that satisfied the majority of the people.
It's true.
You are correct that the majority rolls in this scenario. You ain't got them yet.
I know that.
We're trying to help move you in that direction.
And we moved in that direction.
I saw one other hand, but now I'm not sure. Mr. Stevens?
Yeah.
For the, I'm sorry. The microphone. I'm the microphone.
It seems pretty clear to me that on the basis of the discussions that I've had so far from everybody, actually, that you're not ready to vote on the budget that you have. That we need to have one more budget and go over. And comments that we're not making as much depth at any of the Budget Committee meetings or at budget revision meetings. So I think it seems to be very clear that there needs to be more discussion about the budget before it gets fun enough.
My call for a question?
Um, my next question. Because this is, to me, this is a very important issue because, quite frankly, I'm losing trust in the whole process. Because the numbers Mr. Hopkins just outlined, you've got $185,000 in what you're considering on the motion. What Mr. Hopkins just outlined is you don't have enough to pay for those projects because you're over 200. I read your number correctly. You're over 200,000. If you add the 115 on that, you're over 300,000, which is more than what you had in the budget that we voted down. What gives? I don't understand the math.
We have numbers coming from the local options. We have numbers coming from the local option tax.
No, I'm talking about in the budget. There's a line item, 300,000. What Mr. Hopkins just outlined was, we're over 200,000 now, plus the 115 that got reduced last Monday. You're over 300,000, which is greater than what you had in the budget. So what gives? The budget that they voted down? Okay. Let's do that. Mr. Hopkins, can you help us?
So there were three road projects that the Highway Department had.
Right. Mr. Hopkins just outlined, there's two that remain and it was over 200,000. The third one was 115 that was talked about last Monday. You add those two numbers together, and it's, I don't know, 15,000 or 18,000, over 300,000. You asked us to vote on a budget for 300,000. It really was 318,000. I don't, that's why I'm frustrated. My tone is up a little bit. I don't, all of a sudden, the integrity of what you're doing is a big question mark in my mind. So I agree with the gentleman. Just hope, I think, you can sort of wagons and figure out your numbers. Thank you.
Would you please stop the applauding? This is a public meeting, not a variety show.
So what Mr. Placens just said is all correct. The $300,000 that the budget workshops had put into the operating budget to pay for paving was not going to ever complete all three of those projects exclusively from the operating budget. So what was going to happen was either a portion of the property high con road project was not going to get done to its full length and/or the board was going to be asked to make the difference up by using either the reserve, the fund balance, or the 1% money. So it was going to depend on how the bids came in from the paving companies. But it was always, it was always the case that the three full projects were going to be more than the amount that was inserted into the operating budget.
As a Budget Committee member, I would ask that there be another meeting to discuss it rather than voting tonight.
Yes. So any further comments? Or should we repeat the motion and call the question?
I will, for the benefit of the board, I will say again, we had a productive process to come up with a revised budget. And we've significantly reduced the amount of the annual revision. And I think that what we came up with is a balanced approach to what the town was supporting. And so I would like to see us vote this.
Mr. Hopkins? Oh, I'm sorry.
I had a conversation today with the town treasurer that was on the meeting. And I would just like to share the fundamentals of it. and I would just like to share the fundamentals of it. So the budget cuts that were made at the budget workshop were $241,300. The amount that was left that is an increase to, is $292,950. So what came out of the discussion that I had with Sue Gage today is on page nine of the town report book. The increase is $292,950. It has to make up, and the, about two-thirds of the way down, there's kind of a big space under the total expenses with a lot of white space. In the previous budget year, we adopted a budget which had $100,000 taken from the fund balance to reduce taxes. It had a further $100,000 taken from the fund balance to pay off leases for some of the town equipment. And it had a further $153,000 taken from highway carry forward, which is just another little section of the fund balance. So in effect, there were $353,000 used in the current year's budget which are not available to us in the budget that we are proposing for the upcoming fiscal year. So the $292,950 increase does not even get us to zero in terms of what an actual spending increase is because we started in a hole of $353,000. I'm not blaming anybody, I was part of that discussion, I voted for that budget. We've been through many budget seasons where we've talked about, do we have too much in the fund balance? Is it time to, you know, try to keep it down a little bit by, you know, showing the voters some goodwill? And so the reason I'm telling this is just so that the board is aware that if you do have an additional budget workshop and you do further rework this budget, you're already starting that budget workshop when it comes to order. You're going to be starting from a position where, in fact, because of that $353,000 that came from non-property tax revenue in the present year's budget, you're starting from zero before you start making cuts. So we are at a point where I would just caution the board. We've talked about staff increases at 4% or whatever, that's true. And the COLA for the senior citizens was 3.2%. But a year ago, the COLA for the senior citizens was 8 or 9% and the staff was still at 3%. Like, over the course of a few years, this is going to be a balanced kind of thing where things are getting corrected, things are getting aligned with the economy. But because we have to plan these budgets as far in advance as we do, it's not always going to immediately reflect the current economic situation. So I just really caution the board about convening another budget workshop when you have already created a revised budget that is less than a 0% of new spending.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Okay, it's time to call the question.
Okay, so the motion was to set the revised budget amount from the workshop meeting.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, the noes have it?
No, it doesn't carry.
Oh, the motion doesn't, no, no, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. The motion doesn't carry and...
So you can either, you put it on the agenda for the next select board meeting and you can choose if you want to, to have another budget workshop between now and then.
Okay. Anybody, what's the pleasure of the board? I would make the motion that we revisit the budget approval at the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of revisiting the budget, the revised budget proposal at the next board meeting on, is that people, eight? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous, all of you guys have it? Okay, item 13, setting a special election date. Mr. Hopkins, I think that's me.
Madam Chair, the school has set their election date for April 30th and it's the prudent thing to do to try to match that so that there is one election.
I make the motion that we use that date for our election.
Okay, any discussion? None being heard, we will, are we ready to vote? Okay, all in favor of setting a special election date for April 30th, say aye.
Aye.
You guys have it? And we will move on to the fiscal. Pleasure of the board.
I make the motion that we pass the warrant for $99,091.07.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. I make the motion that we pass this bank transfer for $90,000.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
The bank transfer, board members, is related to the town treasurer's relocation of the town operating accounts.
Thank you.
Okay, let's call the question, the base transfer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to item 15, which is an executive session. I'm going to call recess.